Chase Benet is, is it Bennett or Benet?
Bennett.
Is going to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Would you come forward, please? Come on right up here.
All right. Attention. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Would the clerk take the roll, please?
Mayor Bro.
Here.
District One Morsette.
Here.
Two O'Connell.
Here.
Three Radamacher.
Here.
Four Wyland.
Here.
Five O'Malley.
Yes.
Six Burchill.
Here. At this point, our agenda, we take comments and suggestions from citizens present. Is there anyone that would like to address the council on any subject that is not on the agenda? Anyone? Anyone? I have a couple. Chase Bennett is, I'll take you on second, okay? Chase Bennett is from Troop 471 out of Bloomington, Minnesota. He's a Boy Scout that put together the recruitment brochure for the fire and EMS departments. He did this as an Eagle Scout project, and you want to introduce him, chief?
I think you just did a fine job. You took my speech.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. Last September, I attended the Burnsville Fire muster, and I was at the brat stand, and I got hailed by Jeff Bennett, Chase's dad, inquiring about something, an Eagle project for his son. He'd like to do something in the lines of the fire service. And, you know, I milled around, took a few minutes to think, and I came up with, we, the fire and EMS people don't really have any outreach for recruitment. So I posed that idea to Chase, and Chase took it and ran with it, and the final product, I think, turned out excellent. As Chase put together a brochure.
Why don't you give the council a copy of that, Jim, if you don't mind, or have Chase do that?
Chase has put together this brochure.
Very professionally done.
Professionally done, and I'm very pleased with the outcome.
I'll make sure to get that, sir.
Pass them down there.
Thank you, sir.
I'll take this one.
And part of the, or the goal of the Eagle Scout project is to show leadership in the project, and not necessarily do it all, but somehow have an end result, and I'm very pleased with the end result.
It's wonderful. Yes.
Just for the TV audience, it does mention your mission, the position descriptions, the required training and experience, and now that I'm a volunteer fire or EMT, I can, and it mentions the various things, the equipment that I'll be using as a fireman or firefighter and EMT. Excellent. Beautiful job. Very professional. Let's give Chase a hand. If you have anything to say to the council.
Glad you guys liked it, you know, a long road, but it turned out pretty good, and just glad I can help you guys out in the fire department, and happy to do it.
Are you an Eagle now, or?
Yeah, well, it's past my eighteenth birthday, I'm just doing my board review. Everything else is set, so.
Super. That's a great achievement, and we congratulate you.
Thank you very much, sir.
And now, I think, where's Rich O'Connell? Rich is going to give us a little thank you and description of some of the hockey involvements that they had when they went down to the friendship, international friendship tournament at New Zealand, right?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, President, and council members. First of all, we would like to thank you very much for helping us, participating financially in our endeavor to bring the Pee Wee International Tournament back to Hudson. What I've passed out here is, is one of the items that we use to try to secure this. Obviously, this is a brief description of Hudson, the facilities that we have, some of the amenities that we have here in town. And I do want to point out, if you, if you look at this closely, there are a couple typos in here. We tried to get the printer to change the typos three times. We were assured they were changed. I watched them change them twice, in fact, but, but they never did quite make it through word processing fixed, so. But the Japanese didn't understand that, so they, the interpreter didn't quite explain that right to them. Anyway, here's the deal. We, we appreciate everything that you guys did, and we did everything we could to get this for 2009, but we ran into a roadblock, and that was that the Japanese team from Hachinoi was the originator of this tournament, and they wanted to celebrate the twentieth anniversary of this tournament back home. That's where this tournament started, was in Hachinoi, Japan, and it was kind of the swan song for the, for the originator of the tournament, and we really were in no position to try to wrestle that from him. So we pitched in and said, do we think it's a great thing that it goes to Japan? We did get the commitment from Mr. Kenyari, who is the head of the tournament, that he is supporting us for 2011. So we believe that we will have the tournament here in 2011. They unfortunately do not vote on two different venues at the same time, but we have the assurance that this thing will be here. So we're looking forward to having a tournament here in 2011, but we're going to have to go to Japan to try to, to make sure that this thing is secure. We're going to have a team there anyway, so we look forward to going to Japan. We had a great time, and the team did very well. You may have seen the article in the paper. I think they met with Devon, and Devon did a nice job explaining that to the reporters from The Observer. So all in all, we, we were received very well. The people there loved our team. We had fans that actually came in to watch us every game. The Australians just loved our team for whatever reason. Probably the girls on the team, but, but they really, they were there. We watched a couple of kids kicking and screaming as their parents were hauling them out of the arena, telling their parents they wanted to stay for our games. But we did a nice job. The kids did a great job, and the coaches did excellent. We had a good time, and we look forward to Japan, and we look especially forward to having this thing here in Hudson.
Any questions to Rich? I want to thank you, and especially the hockey participants, the people that represented Hudson, and we thank you for doing that, and let's hope that we get it in 2011.
We're pretty sure we will. Pretty confident about it.
Any questions to Rich? Thank you.
Well, thank you all again. We appreciate it.
Let's go to the consent agenda.
To approve the regular meeting minutes of April 16th, 2007, and the organizational minutes of April 17th, 2007. To approve the two lot certified survey map for 642 and 644 Baracku Drive as proposed by Rich Mar Industries, subject to the Town of Hudson Board of Adjustments approval and the necessary variances for the parking lot and accessory building setbacks. To approve claims for payment in the amount of $630,229.58. A detailed description is available in the clerk's office on request. To approve the issuance of regular operators licenses for the period May 8th, 2007 through June 30th, 2008 to three applicants, and a temporary operator's license to be used May 19th, 2007 through May 20th, 2007, at the Hughes Bow Hoadown Benefit Event at the Hockey Arena, 1820 Hanley Road, to one applicant. Additional information is available in the clerk's office on request. To approve the issuance of amusement operator licenses and device permits to Bertha Fenner, 1202 Third Street, Hudson, Wisconsin, for 13 machines at Dibbo's, 512 Second Street, and Namco Cyber Tainment Incorporated, 877 Supreme Drive, Bensonville, Illinois, for six machines at Hudson Cinema 9, 1920 Crestview Drive. To approve the issuance of a temporary Class B, Class B Retailer's License to the Hudson Area Fathers Club, to be used May 19th, 2007, for the Hughes Bow Hoadown Benefit at the Hockey Arena, 1820 Hanley Road, Hudson, Wisconsin. To approve the issuance of fireworks paraphernalia seller's permits for the period June 15th, 2007, through July 7th, 2007, to 10 applicants upon successful completion of all the requirements in Chapter 132-3 of the Hudson Municipal Code. Applicant information is available in the clerk's office on request. To approve the request of Barry Stipe for the Stipe Show's Carnival to be held May 10th through 13th, 2007, at Plaza 94 Parking Lot. To approve the request of the Final Stretch Incorporated for the following events involved, involving Lakefront Park. The Gopher Badger Foot Race on August 11th, 2007, the Triathlon on September 1st and 2nd, 2007, with neighboring residents, residents to be notified in advance of the street closure, use of barricades indicating access by local traffic and hiring of a patrol officer. To approve the Mayfair Festival to be held Saturday, May 19th, 2007, with one block of Locust Street between Second Street and Third Street to be barricaded from 7:00 a.m. to 5:30 p.m. To approve the request of John and Beth Stidham, 2104 Chestnut Drive, for a block party on the north end of the cul-de-sac on Chestnut Drive on Saturday, June 2nd, 2007, using street barricades. To place on file the quarterly report of the Police Department, the Community Access Board minutes of April 24th, 2007, and the Joint Plan Commission and Council Meeting minutes of April 12th, 2007. That is all.
What is your pleasure on the consent?
For approval.
Second? Roll call vote.
Moresette.
Can I recuse myself from this? Before the final works paraphernalia.
O'Malley.
Yes.
Wyland.
Yeah.
Burchill.
Yes.
Radamacher.
Yes.
O'Connell.
Yes.
Motion is carried. Let's go to Plant Commission. Accessory building garage improvements west of alleyway at 112th Street, John Mingo. Jenny's going to give us an executive summary.
Request by Mr. John Mingo for the garage door improvements at 112 Walnut Street, and that's accessory building on the west side of the alleyway. Plant Commission recommendation is to approve the proposed building improvements to provide a 16-foot wide door to the accessory building on the west side of the alley, as requested by John Mingo, 112 Walnut Street.
Move to approve.
One second.
Any discussion or comments? Harry Nunnall in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Motion's carried. Automatic teller machine ATM Dixbar, 111 Walnut Street, Paul Kramer.
Again, Plant Commission recommends approval of the proposed automatic teller machine, the ATM, as proposed by Dixbar, 111 Walnut Street. I think Mr. Paul Kramer is here tonight to answer any questions.
Any questions regarding this? We did recommend, the Plant Commission did recommend that a few of these areas that have the ATMs, that possibly we could install some cameras for future reference, and they're taking that up now, or will be.
Are you talking about cameras other than?
Other than this.
Yeah. Okay.
Does, whose responsibility is it if this actually gets broken into? Does the city respond? Have any liability, or is it all Dix?
No, it's all theirs.
It's on their property.
It's all private.
Move to approve.
Comments or questions?
Harry Nunnall in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Motion's carried. Certificate of Compliance Auto Service Center, 805 Dominion Drive, J. Andrews Tire Pros.
Committee recommends approval of a certificate of compliance for an auto service center, 805 Dominion Drive, as applied for by J. Andrews Tire Pros with the following conditions: that no on-street parking will be allowed on Dominion Drive or within the right-of-way of the former Exit 2 Drive on the north side of the lot. Hours of operation are limited, 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., Monday through Friday, 7:30 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Saturday, and closed on Sunday. Annual review one year after issuance of occupancy permit is issued, and last notified in city relief to use of future tenant, so the city may determine if the use is permitted or requires a review process. Representatives of J. Andrews Tire Pros are here tonight.
Would you like to hear from both sides, or would you like to make a motion, and then we open it up for discussion? How would you like to proceed?
I move to deny the request for a certificate of compliance.
I'll second.
Discussion.
It just doesn't belong in this, in this area. We don't need to dig any deeper than that, I don't think. Do you, Randy?
No.
That's it.
Well, I think you need to say a little bit more than that, because the zoning ordinance does at least refer to this type of use as a use authorized with certain, upon approval of either a certificate of compliance or conditional use, as I explained in my memo. So I don't think it's sufficient for the council to just say it doesn't belong in this area, because the zoning ordinance does provide at least for it in this area if it meets the requirements of one of those two processes as you see fit.
Well, I'll give you a more specific answer for my part, then, which is that I believe it would actually eventually run counter to Paragraph 5 of Chapter 175 of our own city code, that we would be installing something detrimental to the surrounding property values.
Any other comment? Ready for the question?
Do you want to allow anyone to speak, who's here on behalf of, I mean, that's up to you.
Anyone want to speak from the audience? Mr. Magnusson.
Mayor and City Council, thanks for allowing me to talk to you briefly about this. You've already sort of told me where you're going, and I have to tell you how disappointed I am. Let me explain why. A year ago, my clients paid a million dollars for this site, the old Perkins store, in reliance upon what your zoning ordinances permitted. And from the beginning, we have been met with a hailstorm of objections. Objections from neighboring property owners who had an option to purchase this property to put a sports bar on. Now, the sports bar failed because they didn't get a liquor license, but they haven't stopped trying to acquire this property for their own purposes. They continue to this day. They have circulated opinions, petitions with the old people in that neighborhood, old people that live there, because your zoning ordinances were changed to allow residences in a business district. What they have told these old people, I do not know, but it must be that there's going to be jackhammers going off to wake them up from their morning coffee. I don't know what it is. This is not an obnoxious use. If you've looked at the profiles of the building, you will see that it's done in a first-class manner. There's extraordinary landscaping on two elevations. One, a setback area on the south to protect the building that wasn't required by your ordinances that they've offered to do at great expense for themselves. I have been here so many times in the past year that I feel like a guest. I know better, after I have the indication, I did tonight, that you're going to deny this. But here's what I'd like to point out to you. If you think these people are just going to walk away from a million-dollar investment, you're, you're not looking at this in an honest way. What your zoning code says, if somebody's entitled to a certificate of compliance, it says the common council shall grant it. It isn't something that's discretionary anymore if you're entitled to a certificate of compliance. There is no reason why this isn't compatible, because it's something you have chosen to list in your zoning ordinance as something that is permitted with a certificate of compliance. It is a business district. It is a first-class sort of use, and the fact that you are being intimidated by these lawyers from La Crosse and the, all of the property owners in the neighborhood, I hope they're going to pay your expenses associated with the lawsuit, because that's just exactly what's going to happen.
Thank you.
Thank you for allowing me to come here this evening once again and address you. My name is Ryan Carey. I represent Motels of Hudson. I also represent our law firm, who is a business owner just across the street from where this proponent is, is asking you to, to allow this building to go in. Mr. Magnusson is right. His client has been met with a hailstorm of opposition. He's been met with a hailstorm of opposition for very good reasons. This, what's also clear, and I will go over this in depth, is that they are not entitled to a certificate of compliance, and I'll also give you reasons, legal reasons, in addition to the one Mr. O'Malley pointed out, which in and of itself, I believe, is a reason. Like I said, Mr. Andrews and his attorney are here once again, asking, asking certain things of the council. The requests that they have made are numerous, and they have changed several times, but they are the same theme, and it's all realistically the same business that we're so much opposed to. At one time, they asked you to allow to put two businesses on this one site. Another time, they asked you to give away some land so they could make this business work. There have been other requests, and you know what they are, and here we are, here again today, and they want you to ignore issues of compatibility, ignore the law, and today, what I'm asking you to do is to look at what they're really asking for here. And I think if you look at the facts, you look at the law, you'll see what they're asking you to do is get them out of a bad deal. They made a bad deal, and they're asking the council to get you out, get them out of it, and that's not what you're here to do today. Despite the fact that the proponents' arguments have changed over time and the requests have changed over time, our position has remained unchanged, and it remains unchanged for very good reasons. We're here today to go over those reasons. I intend to highlight a few practical considerations for you. I'll let my father, Sam, talk to you about the legal issues. First one I want to talk about is compatibility. Now, compatibility, as I think correspondence has pointed out, is a very subjective consideration. I'm not going to insult your intelligence and tell you what to determine whether something is compatible or not, but I will give you the facts. The existing uses on Dominion Drive include two hotels, a 55-plus housing facility, a law office, and investment firm. Dominion also provides access to Hosford Street, which contains several other buildings. Now, you've received correspondence from quote-unquote expert Dave Wanberg telling you a few things. He states that an auto service center on Dominion Drive would not enhance existing and planned surrounding uses within immediate vicinity. He also states that the business proposed is incompatible with the neighborhood. I have not heard, nor do I think you have heard, from any experts on behalf of the proponents saying otherwise. You've also heard today yet again, and I heard this at the Plant Commission, and I frankly, no idea where this comes from, but there's apparently some sort of emotional component that is driving this business. And, and I'm here once again to put any thoughts or considerations concerning that to rest once and for all. If you recall, ladies and gentlemen, I stood before several of you about a year ago, and I was here on behalf of my client, Dennis LeVold, asking for a liquor license as to this very Perkins site. I handled that transaction start to finish, and I stress the word "finish," because we are finished. We have not pursued that business whatsoever since that, that deal failed. I'll tell you what we did do. We entered into an option of purchase, and we made that option of purchase contingent on obtaining certain things that we needed, one of which was a liquor license. I stood before you, I asked for a liquor license on behalf of my client, and for other, for reasons that you all are well aware, we didn't get that license. Somebody else got it. And what we did is we did it the right way. We did our due diligence before we bought the building, and you're, you're talking to an individual here who decided to do due diligence after he bought the building. Now, for some reason, I, there's been some sort of sympathy factor. There, there should be no sympathy here. This is not what you're asking for. When I came before you and asked for a liquor license, I wasn't asking for sympathy. Business is business, and this is not business. This is some sort of sympathy factor that I don't, I don't understand where it comes from. The other thing I want to talk to you about is the negative impact that has resulted over time for Comfort Inn. As you well know, the, the layout of Hudson has changed significantly since Exit 2 Drive left, Hardee's left, Perkins now is left. The natural flow of traffic used to bring a natural flow of customers to the door of Comfort Inn. That doesn't happen anymore. It's survived to date, but I'm not sure how much more it can endure. It opened its doors in 1988, and I think we'd all hate to see something, the business go out of business due to the fact that we're going to put something next door which would be detrimental to its, its business. You've also seen, time and time again, and today is no exception, continued support of adjoining landowners, business owners, and residents, and I don't think that should be overlooked. I know several council members have also received phone calls, and they've received phone calls for very good reasons, those same reasons why I'm standing before you here today. Now, in addition to the practical, practical considerations that I just mentioned, there are some legal arguments that further substantiate denial of a certificate of compliance, and I'm going to allow Sam to come up and address those briefly.
Ryan, thanks for allowing me to come up here. I want to go over this very briefly with you, because I think the, the issues are pretty straightforward and, and I think are pretty clear and should be clearly understood by everybody as it relates to what these folks are asking for. One of the things we're not going to do is we're not going to engage in, in any type or form of intimidation of this council. I have a great deal of respect for each and every one of you on this council, and I also know that you possess the necessary courage and wisdom to make a decision based on the merits and not on the basis of intimidation or threats of a lawsuit. First of all, I read Attorney Mont Kittrick's opinion letter to you, actually was addressed to the Plant Commission, and I, I believe it's on the basis of that, at least in part, that they probably made the decision that they made, and I must say that I have a great deal of respect for Attorney Mont Kittrick, her knowledge of the municipal law, I have a great deal of respect for. However, I must disagree with her emphatically as it relates to some of the opinions that she has rendered. And the first one that was asked is whether or not a variance is necessary in connection with the request that these folks are making. And her answer to that, and if, if we don't have a variance, then we shift to this, shift to the other approach that we'll be talking about in a minute, but in answer to that, she felt that a variance was probably not necessary. We put up a map here to show you what we understand that they're proposing to do. We have an existing substandard structure, and it's substandard because it violates the setback regulations along the west side of the building. It probably encroaches, I think you've got a 20-foot wide setback, commercial property up there, and this is 10 feet in violation of that setback, the existing structure is. Now, however, that existing structure is grandfathered in because it was constructed prior to the enactment of that setback ordinance. Now, what they're asking to do is to take that structure and, and increase its size by some 7,000 square feet, and not bring it in conformity with your current setback ordinance, but in effect, continue and extend the violation. So they're taking the same building or the existing footprints, they're continuing the extension in a southerly way for a greater dimension than it is currently in violation We think that this is clearly a prohibited by the ordinance and not allowed for, and therefore a variance would be necessary in order to, to achieve this. The regulations that you have under 255-7B3, non-conforming uses, buildings and structures, talk about any building or structure which is considered to be substandard only because it cannot meet the setback requirements of the zoning district. They may be altered or structurally improved, provided the alterations or structural improvements do not increase any existing substandard dimension. And this, this addition clearly increases the substandard dimension. It clearly increases the violation of the 10-foot setback that is grandfathered in to the extent of the building as it originally existed, pre your setback ordinance. Secondly, this, this regulation also talks about structural alterations, and it does permit structural alterations, and it does- structural alterations, and it does permit other kinds of alterations. However, I believe that if you look at that definition carefully, it doesn't include and allow for extensive additions to a structure that is in existence and is in existence in violation of the setback ordinance strictly because it was grandfathered in. It certainly doesn't contemplate, under the spirit or language of that ordinance, a 7,000-square-foot add-on to this building. The setback regulations are there for good reasons. They're there for airspace, aesthetics, safety, those are all important. There are greater setbacks in the commercial districts, and that's for good reason, including fire and other safety issues. You should not be approving and not saying that this building is in compliance. Mr. Magnuson says if it's in compliance, you shall issue a certificate of in compliance. It's not in compliance. The proposed addition causes this to not be in compliance, and therefore, you're not mandated to issue a certificate of compliance, and in fact, it would be improper for you to do so. I will tell you, on the practical side of things, for just a moment, that I'm sure many of you have been involved in numerous commercial transactions and numerous other residential transactions and things that have come before you, and it's standard procedure to do your due diligence ahead of the transaction, to do it while you're in your contingency period, to do it the right way. And if you do it the wrong way, you shouldn't be coming to the council and making accusations to the council about how many times you have to be here and how many things you have to do, and then threaten the council with the kind of threats that have been made today. Bottom line is, the due diligence wasn't done in the proper fashion, and the application should be denied. Thank you.
Thank you for listening to me once again, Mr. Mayor, and council members and staff. I'm Bob Pierce, and I live at 901 Dominion Drive, the senior apartment building, and I'm, I guess, one of those old folks that's been led around by the nose. So I wanted to talk a little bit about that, and I don't feel that I was led around, and I think if you knew some of the people in our building, you'd find it very difficult to lead them anywhere without having some pretty solid grounds to do it on. We are opposed to this development, and one of the members of the Planning Commission the other night indicated something that we probably are just afraid, and there's no reason for it, and he had so much experience with this kind of thing where people were afraid of something, and then later on, it always turns out to be not a valid concern, and everybody's happy afterwards. He didn't tell us any of the criteria by how he measured this or how he came to that conclusion, and so I'm wondering if that's really true. I've known people that have lived next to railroad tracks in metropolitan area that had train whistles go by, and they learned to live with it, but that doesn't mean they like it, and they couldn't do anything about it. In this case, we have a chance to do something about it before it happens. I can see some bad things happening to the neighborhood if this goes in. Maybe they will, maybe they won't. I'd rather not take the gamble. I think there are other alternatives. I don't think that we should be forced into this, and I was surprised, I guess, in a way, to hear the threat of a lawsuit. I guess that wouldn't include us old people, but us old people in Dominion Drive are still very much opposed to this. Many of them are probably watching this proceedings tonight, and I hope that the council will vote as the way the indications are that they will vote, and I applaud them for doing that even in a basis of threats. To me, summed up, just, it doesn't seem to fit in this area. You have two office buildings, two motels, and a senior building, and we moved in, there was a Perkins restaurant. This seems like a nice, compatible mix. The Perkins moved out. Then it's what to do with the property. When someone jumps in and tries to take charge of it with something that's not very popular, I think that the council should take into account the residents and the other businesses and the other owners in the area as to the long-range impact. It's not just, you know, you can't just look at what's on the table today, but what's going to be on the table five, 10, or 15 years from now? Are you going to look back on your decisions and say, "We made a mistake," or "We did the right thing"? I hope, from our standpoint, that you will say that we did the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Viers. Did you have a comment? Anyone else?
Yeah, when other comments are done, I'd just...
Any other comments? Dave?
I'll make it real brief. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I think Bob spoke well, representing the neighbors behind us. We talk, I don't know the legal issues, the technicalities, I'm an operations guy. I know how to take care of my guests, and I try to put myself in their shoes. That being the case, putting myself in their shoes, I look at that one word in all of this legal mumbo jumbo, and it's incompatible. And I know it's anybody's perspective how they can interpret that. It's not fears, I think it's logical concerns. And the short version of what we're looking at is four service bays, not more than four feet, or, I'm sorry, 100 feet from our hotel, facing our hotel. You heard the conditions attached to this particular certificate. There's been talk all the way along about soundproofing service bay doors, keeping the doors closed, things like this. Let's be real, there's nobody that's going to enforce that, and I didn't hear in those conditions where those were soundproofed doors. But also being realistic, four doors, at some point, I talked to the guy over at Tires Plus, the manager, and I asked him, I said, "What's realistically, if I were to ask you to close your doors, how realistic is that"? He said, "Well, you know, in the winter, that's a realistic thing. We typically keep them closed as much as we can in the winter. Spring, summer, and fall, we leave them open, predominantly because part of the cold or whatever, something about ventilation, but to keep the fresh air in there with the engines running and things like that." My concern for our guests is that the noise coming out of this is going to be like a megaphone. Even if they shut three out of four doors, at some point, one of those doors is going to be open. Right now, as we speak, I have guests staying in the hotel that work nights. I have a pressure washing crew that's overworking in St. Paul cleaning ramps. I have two RNs that are contracted through their companies, they travel the United States, they contract with Hudson Hospital, and they work overnights. Common logic, not a fear, is these daytime sleepers, I don't think they're going to appreciate that sound, and there will be sound. Those old people that were referred to earlier, that's about 30% of our business, that's about 5,000 room nights times two people typically, that's 10,000 guests like Bob Pierce. They're not going to appreciate that either. So in essence, I'm just asking you to look at that word, "incompatible." We have big challenges with our location. We used to be right there, and you know, we can't move the hotel. When Hardee's left, when Perkins left, when Wendy's left, they, well, obviously Perkins moved, but basically restaurants release operations, they can move somewhere when their lease is up, the ones that are owned. As you can tell, right now, Hardee's is now Comprehensive Communications, Wendy's is now Valley Pool and Spas. It's not too hard to renovate a building, an old restaurant building, into something else. Try to do that with a hotel. All those guys left, the Super 8 and the Comfort Inn are still there, and we're at a big disadvantage right now. That's what I'm asking you to consider. Thank you.
My name is Mike Hafler. I'm the architect representing the client, and just a couple of comments. I keep hearing issues about due diligence, and typically, when we go into cities and work with clients, the times that we approach the client and point them towards a due diligence phase is on a rezone. This particular use is within the zoning restrictions that the council has created. It's a permitted use. Being a permitted use, we design around that, we review the use, and we create a building that will fit and enhance the area. When councils elect to create a zoning code, the compatibility is already taken into place. They determine what those associated uses would be. So if one was denied approval based on an accepted zoning type of building that we're proposing, could somebody else then come in with another use that's one of those 15 or 16 different uses and be denied as well? What actually is best for the site? The property values as well, somebody had noted the property values would be lowered. It's all based on an opinion. It depends on the type of building, structure, the use, everything that goes into play. So you can't really say the values of the existing buildings would be hurt by that. As well, there's been mention of an extension that does not align or is within the setback that the zoning ordinance allows for an extension of an addition, which is typical through, we've seen this with other cities, it's a very typical code. If you align the existing building with, or the proposed addition with the existing building, it's an acceptable construction. And as well, I wanted to mention with the doors, the building's required to have makeup air. So when Tires Plus doors, and we do them, we've done numerous Tires Plus doors, when they open the doors, it's not because the mechanical system isn't working properly. They're required to have a means of egress for the ventilation with the doors closed. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I will keep this brief. My name's Dennis LeVold. I'm the managing general partner for Motels of Hudson. We operate the Holiday Inn Express and the Comfort Inn. One thing I do want to clarify, one of my three partners is a resident of the city of La Crosse. I am a resident of the city of Hudson, and I'm a registered voter in District 2. Our hotel has 60 rooms. There are hotel rooms which are bedrooms. When our guests, covered under Wisconsin law, register, it's their domicile. They have protected rights in that room as if it were their home. And I'm going to leave you with a picture. This window is your bedroom window at home, and you face four bays of an auto service center and a tire store. When you sit in your bedroom, what is that going to do to your peace of mind in your home, but what is that going to do to the value of your property? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? No one? Madam Counsel?
Thank you. I did want to respond to some of the comments that have been made. I just want to make it clear that what the council's job is in this matter is to apply the zoning ordinance as best it can. It's not a popularity contest in terms of how many more people are objecting or how many more people are in favor of it. It's to look at the language of the ordinance and apply it as best you can, and it's real important that you keep that in mind. It's also not a matter of trying to put a use in there that will help an existing business. Again, it's to look at the ordinance and apply it as best you can. In this situation, I think the architect misspoke to some extent. It's not a permitted use. It's a use that is permitted upon issuance of a certificate of compliance. If it was a permitted use, they would go in and apply for a building permit, and that would be done. The city, when it adopted the certificate of compliance procedure, must have thought, I mean, none of us, well, I wasn't around, and most of you weren't around, that this use was compatible with the area but required a little bit more oversight, to make sure the conditions could be placed on any certificate of compliance that would protect the public health, safety, and welfare. It did not put into that procedural process and into that consideration a compatibility factor. That factor, I think, under the certificate of compliance, has already been done by the city as long as conditions can be put on the business such that it satisfies any adverse effect it might have on surrounding properties. Those conditions are what the Plan Commission came up with in terms of the hours, the work with the bay doors closed, and so forth. Again, so it's not a permitted use, but it is a use that's permitted with a certificate of compliance. That is less strict than a conditional use permit. Right in the ordinance, under the conditional use permit process, there is, it requires the council to consider compatibility. It doesn't do that under the certificate of compliance procedure, I think, because the city has already made that determination that it is, at some level, compatible with the surrounding area as long as some time, place, manner, type restrictions or conditions can be put on, hours of operation, doors closed, and so forth. In terms of the variance issue, what the language says, and, I mean, you're faced with a difficult ordinance to apply, but the language says it shall not, that if it doesn't increase the substandard dimension, that structural alterations are allowed. No definition of increase, but the practice has been of the city to interpret that to mean that if it doesn't push further into the setback area, doesn't reduce the setback any further than it already is. And that's how that ordinance has been applied consistently, is my understanding from our community development director. It's my opinion that the council should try to apply it, the ordinance, consistently with the practice, as long as it is satisfied that that practice is supported by the language of the ordinance. That's a judgment call that you have to make, but I think it is supported. As I said in my memo, there's other interpretations, and frankly, there are other interpretations in other zoning ordinances. Both types of interpretation of that provision, you know, not increasing the substandard dimension, the ordinances are interpreted both ways. So either is reasonable, the city's practice has been, to interpret it so that if it doesn't encroach further into the setback area, it's not increasing the substandard dimension. If that's, if you find that's consistent with the language of the ordinance, then a variance is not required, and the limitations on structural additions don't apply. You're not here to relieve someone of a business deal. What you're here to do, either way, you know, is apply the ordinance. I would also point out that other businesses have located in that area with this ordinance in place. Some of the businesses that are opposed to this proposed use, this certificate of compliance for an auto service center has been in place, I don't know the exact time, but for some time. It's not something new, so that everyone who's up there lives with the terms of the ordinance as it exists, both the people who purchased the property and the people who chose to locate their businesses in that area. There's no basis for relying on that property being used as a restaurant just because it was used as a restaurant at some point. I, you know, I just urge you to try to look at the language of the ordinance. I pointed out in my memo that there are some difficulties with that, and I don't think the compatibility issue under certificate of compliance, at least it's not specifically a factor to be considered. That's under the conditional use permit application process. If you have any questions, I'm happy to try to answer them.
Anyone else in the audience? I want to give everybody a chance to express themselves. Are we ready for the... Okay. The subject is the certificate of compliance for an auto service center. There is a motion before us to deny. All in favor of that? All in favor of that motion, please raise your hand. Opposed? Okay. Motion is carried. Let's go to six. Consider applications submitted for Class B beer and Class B liquor licenses. Hudson Spirits LLC, Buffalo Wild Wings at 913 Pearson Drive, and the Nova of Hudson, 236 Cooley Road, Suite 2. Let's wait till the audience clears and then... It'll just be a couple of minutes here. I'd like to have our attorney read the requirements that we put forth so that you understand what you're going to comply with before we take you up. Want to go ahead and counter?
Okay. The city's adopted an ordinance that, it's 145-11B, that outlines several factors that the city, the council, will consider in deciding whether to issue or grant any liquor license application. And those factors are the number of employees and creation of new jobs proposed by the applicant, the expansion of the tax base resulting from any new construction that may be associated with the application, the adequacy of parking and ability of city departments to provide services to any new establishment, including police protection, any adverse impact that the proposed premises may have upon adjoining neighborhoods or other businesses, and then any other relevant criteria that may be appropriate under the circumstances of each application.
Wasn't there an amendment to that earlier this year that considered the number of premises within?
Oh, you're right.
Earlier this year?
You're right.
Number of premises?
Well, the number of licensees, businesses already licensed in that area, and the proximity of other licensed businesses to the proposed applicant, that was...
Earlier this year?
Yep, that's a good point.
Or late last year.
So it's helpful to the council if you can try to present information on these factors so that it can make a decision based on the ordinance.
Dave, you want to start with?
I'm David Robson. I represent Hudson Spirits LLC. We are in the commercial development Bantera on Carmichael Road and I-94. Brian's putting up renderings of the building that we're constructing. That's a brand-new building. There'll be in excess of 100 employees. In light of the fact that it's a brand-new building, obviously that will create 100 new jobs. They expect to hire more than that initially, but they will fall back to about 100 employees upon final establishment of the business. This building that we're constructing is 11,000 square feet approximately. Most of you have seen this already because we've been through a city council on planning, but the project is between $2 and $3 million, depending on what the final tenant's going to be as far as buildout. So it's obviously increasing the tax base substantially within the city. We provided 102 additional parking spots for this building, and it provides great access for public safety and fire and all those accesses because it's very easily accessible off of Carmichael and I-94. Number five, only two existing Class B liquor licenses exist in District Number Two, which is, this business falls within District Two, the Hudson House and the Green Mill. None are in the Bantera Commercial Development, which is 25 acres. The closest Class B liquor license to this property is the Green Mill, which is in a different development but across Carmichael Road. And there's another item that was part of the new items, number seven, is there future development coming? And we are obviously developers, and we have been approached by both TGI Fridays and Chili's in the near past and currently, so it's very likely that there will be a Chili's and/or a TGI Fridays. I can't guarantee you that they're going to come in our development, but they're going to, they intend to come to Hudson. Whether they're in our development or somebody else, they're going to need a liquor license if they're going to operate a TGI Fridays or a Chili's. So if we want to have TGI Fridays and Chili's, my recommendation is that you approve Buffalo Wild Wings' Hudson Spirits' application for a liquor license and withhold the second one for future development. Do you have any questions?
Any questions to Dave? Okay. Thank you. Now the Nova.
My name is Jana Gaffer, and I am the owner and, I guess, the social director down at the Nova. We, I'll answer the questions that you had from, similar to what we had last year. Currently, I won't employ 100 people. I have upped my number, however, from last year because we have increased our business. I have about 25 full and part-time employees. With the liquor license coming in, if we get a chance to have that license, I would like to add an additional five to 10 employees just because of the amount of traffic. Since last year, when we came to you in April, we have upped our menu, and that has increased our traffic for dinner traffic and that type of thing. So our employee base has gone up considerably. We do not have any new construction on our site. Our site is a historic building. It has been in Hudson for many, many years. The building is already set up currently as a restaurant, plus we have a patio area that is outside. So as we anticipate right now, we intend to use what we have currently to add bar space to it, but that doesn't mean that in the future, we wouldn't like to do some kind of expansion if possible. We currently have the required amount of parking for the occupancy rate that we have, both for the patio and for the inside, the interior part of the Nova. We're not changing that rate at this time. We're located on a main road in Hudson, so we have access to all the city departments to provide services and that type of thing. Our business hours will continue to be the same as we currently have right now. We don't intend to become a bar that is open all night because we do have houses that are, well, we only have two houses, but we have a small neighborhood that is close to where we are at. As for where we're located, some people consider us downtown, some people consider us on the hill. We're kind of right in the middle on Cooley Road. If you go by our road, there really is no other establishment that serves liquor in that area. The closest one going up the hill would be the Hudson House. The closest one going the other way would probably be Pudge's Bar. So we're kind of in the middle of it, depending on where you see us, where you think we are located at. I know that I sent my letter to all of you. I'm a letter writer. That's one of the things of being a teacher for many, many years. That's one of the best ways for me to express myself. But I would just like to read it in case some of you didn't get a chance to read it. To Mayor Burrow and the Hudson City Council members, we're applying for the Class B liquor license made available this year. This is our third time applying for this type of license and our third year in business. We're located on Cooley Road going up the hill into Hudson. We're currently applying for this license to help our restaurant business progress along with the growth in the city of Hudson. We originally opened three years ago, and we're given the chance to apply for a Class C wine and Class B beer licenses. We were not an established business at the time. We have grown to become a fixture in Hudson, not only for the residents here, but also for the tourists that come from all over during the year. It surprises me every time that someone tells me they're from out of state and a friend from another area told them to come to our restaurant. We pride ourselves in trying to give the best service and to be a little unique and different. In this day and age of chain restaurants, people are starting to look for something a little bit different in places with a hometown connection. It is sometimes very difficult for small businesses to succeed at the same level as the larger ones. We need to be creative and proactive in how we change and promote ourselves to the public. Hudson's small business community does a wonderful job promoting each other, and we have a great friend in the river with all the people it brings into Hudson. At the same time, we all need to stay ahead of the game as a small business. We, as the Nova, also need to stay ahead of the game by looking at options to increase our business and keep us going. We intend to keep doing what works well for our restaurant, a changing menu every three months, changing wine choices, patio service in the summer, the relationship with our store next door and the wine classes that we offer. Obtaining this license will give us the opportunity to enhance our business by offering specialty drinks in the summer and winter, giving those non-beer and wine drinkers an option, offering classes on types of liquor as well as our wine and beer classes, the ability to host special functions, weddings, rehearsals, retirements, et cetera, increasing our employee numbers, and the possibility of opening up for lunches and expansion. Our restaurant has turned into a destination spot for many people. We have regulars who have become part of our family, newcomers that can't wait to return, and community members who have a wonderful place to relax and enjoy life for a little while. We have no intention of becoming just a bar. We want to be a whole experience, food, drink, and atmosphere. We will never be a chain restaurant, and there is a place for that in every community, and when Buffalo Wild Wings comes in, both of my sons will be there probably regularly. But there's also a place for our type of restaurant. The second time we applied for the license, we were told we were already successful and didn't eat as badly as the other businesses. We are doing well, but we really want to continue that way. Two out of the four businesses that applied with us are now gone, and we don't want to disappear. Please consider us for this license once again. We will continue to provide a service for this community through our restaurant, our involvement in city committees, donations to the community, taxes paid to the city, promotion of Hudson to our patrons, and commitment to strive for the best in our business. We've shown what we can do to help the city, and we love how Hudson has changed for the positive. I love being a business owner in Hudson. Like I said, I was a teacher for 17 years and retired to do this business, and it has been wonderful to be a part of this community in that way. So please consider us, and I'll go by with whatever you decide.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
Have they met all of the requirements as far as...
Yeah, they've, well, it's up to you if you have any further questions, but they've responded to the factors.
Mr. Mayor, we've heard them together. Do you want us to vote on them together, or do you want to divide them out?
I think we should take them up separately.
Everly thought. I wish to move, then, that we accept and approve the application of Hudson Spirits LLC doing business with Buffalo Wild Wings.
Second? Second? Any discussion or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried.
For the move that we approve the application of the Nova of Hudson LLC.
Second? Did you? Okay. Whatever. We got a choice. Comments?
Yeah, I, the Nova does a great job, and I love, I love what they do there, but my understanding is that we set these licenses aside, these new licenses, for new construction, redevelopment, and their business doesn't qualify for that, and so I will vote no for issuing the license to the Nova.
Any other comments? I have a tendency, I think I have a tendency to agree. We set it for new development, and I, a great job, but we put it for new development.
Can I just comment, just to clarify? That's not in the ordinance. It was, the council decided it wanted flexibility, and so it was what, it was a factor the council could consider, and that was the idea, to be sure it could consider what new development is coming in, but it's not that these are set aside for that. The council has flexibility in applying that factor.
That's true, but that was the intent behind doing...
Well, and just, I'm trying to tell you what the ordinance says, and then it's up to the council to decide how to apply those factors.
I would like to dwell for just a second on another part of the conversation we had in that same meeting, which is that under our new population guidelines, Devin gave us an approximate time, but under our new population guidelines, and we get estimates every month from the state on this...
Once a year.
Once a year, excuse me, and then we estimate the rest of the year. He estimated that our population would allow for more liquor licenses to be issued in the very near future. So I don't think we're stifling any intended...
Is it 625 or 650?
No, 650.
650, yeah. And that, his estimate, I can't put words in your mouth, Devin, but it was sometime later this year, perhaps early winter or very late fall.
It really depends on, the preliminary estimate comes out in August, the final estimate comes out in October. That's the one we have to use. It was at 11:07 last October. I'm just trying to figure out where we will be at. So it's every 6:50? 12:50, correct. Great idea. So we have 12:50, so it really depends on what the state estimate comes at.
True.
You know, and that, there's a lot of factors that go into it. Correct me if I'm wrong, Danny. There's, they use building permits, they use car licenses, they use income tax filers. So, you know, we never know. One year it'll go up 800, 900. Last year it went up 350, so that's, we'll know in August. But there's a little bit of a lag, obviously, you know, in doing that.
And I understand that we will have a natural, you know, there will be more licenses as that population increases, but again, the, we want flexibility, but the intent behind this was to have these licenses available for new development or redevelopment.
But new is not in the ordinance.
And I guess you look at some of our unique destination locations like the Nova, like some of the other places downtown, there's a lot of value in supporting that unique destination for our tourism business, for other things that keeps people coming to Hudson, coming to support the downtown area. So I see there's a good value for downtown.
I think Lee has a very important point there, that, and nothing against Dave's application, which is, I've done business with BW3 for years, and they're a good organization, but no one is ever going to say, you've got to go to the BW3 in Hudson because it, or the Buffalo Wild Wings in Hudson because it's just the place to go. But they are going to say that about the Nova, and they have been saying that about the Nova, and people who come to the Nova crossing state lines stay downtown and shop and dine elsewhere as well because it makes Hudson part of the destination that the Tourism Board is so anxious to keep going. I think it's a very solid positive for Hudson to allow the Nova to compete on a level playing field with the other establishments.
I think future growth, I'm looking, I'm trying to look at this down the road, and maybe I shouldn't, but, you know, what we potentially have coming in downtown, and the timeframes are so ambiguous, so I don't know, it's tough to say, but...
Mayor, can I put one down?
Let them first.
I'm done.
Any other? Now you may.
What I was going to say is that in addition to the population increase, as we know, the state law allows one license for every 500 persons, so there are two additional reserve licenses that could be opened up after...
Exactly. Quite frankly, when the Nova opened, John, no offense, I thought it wouldn't last very long. Really, no offense. You've done a fantastic job. It's something that is unique. People talk about it, and I don't think we should take away from what you've established, what you've done, the reputation that you have, and quite frankly, it's so unique that I feel that we should give you the chance to expand and to allow the other alcoholic beverages that you aren't able to put forth today by granting this license. Are we ready for the? All in favor of the...
Aye.
Aye. Wait a minute. All in favor, raise your hand. Opposed? Motion's carried. Thank you, and good luck to both.
Absolutely.
Remember, John and Jana, no, no offense. Let's go to Public Safety Committee on the second page, number six. Consider requests for changes to parking restrictions on Front Street. Paul, you're going to give us the changes?
Yes, yes, I will. Get to that paperwork there.
Little paper, we've got plenty of time.
Okay. Yes, currently, the street is signed on the east side as, or on the west side as no parking between May and September, and there is, there is no signage on the, on the east side of the street. We're having some troubles down there with the, with the folks who live on Front Street as far as boat parking, trailer parking, and when they have people over as far as who can, you know, park near their home and walk comfortably to their home if they're visiting. So we've come up with a solution here to sign the east side of the street as residential parking only, and the west side of the street as no trailer parking, and removing the no parking between May and September that is currently there.
I'd clarify why I abstained on First Street. My thought was, the residents of First Street had the same problem down there with the Orange Street launch and whatnot, so they all had to put their trailers in their yards. And I know that we brought it up at Public Safety, that those people on Front Street didn't have driveways, the majority of them...
didn't have driveways, the majority of them do. So, I figured as keeping it as simple as possible, why don't we just put in place the same as we did on First Street, and no trailer parking? And that was the reason behind my abstention. Because we've already done it elsewhere, and it's worked.
Can you give us an idea of how many people have driveways and how many don't? Because I don't want to work a hardship on those who don't have a driveway to put it right.
No, I'm just saying the first three houses, I think, I'm not sure if they have.
Three or four don't have driveways. The last one, I think, has a split driveway.
They do have parking areas if they don't have a driveway.
Right, so the issue on First Street, they've got no trailer parking on both sides of the street. There are a number of people there that have their own trailers, that would have literally no place to put them if we went with the First Street solution. And that's why I came up with the recommendation that what's happening is people will go to park their boats across the way, they'll launch them, and then instead of paying the five dollars to park in that lot, they'll come across and park in front of the houses on Front Street. And that's the only place that many of them have to park. So, to solve the problem, we said, and then, I guess, a long time ago, there was a lot of problems with people parking trailers along there, which made the road too narrow. So, the, they, they just put up no parking at all on the west side of the street through the summertime. So, that's why we came up with this solution, which still allows emergency vehicles. It allows the residents to have places to park. It does free up parking across the way for anything that's not trailers. So, it seemed like the best balance of the needs of the residents and the needs of other people that needed to use the area.
I move that we accept the Public Safety Committee recommendation as stated.
I'll second.
Any discussion or comments? I guess we already had them. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close, motion's carried. Next one is to consider the request for changes to the parking restrictions in Williams Lot.
This is really just for informational purposes. Where Downtown Parking Committee recommended the Public Safety Committee, which adopted the change of, uh, changing out the permit parking spaces and, and adding some additional eight-hour spaces. Uh, what the change is going to be is that all interior spaces, all interior spaces behind the Public Safety Building and the floor next to it are going to be permit parking only spaces. And then all exterior spaces, which, which surround the, the edge of the parking spot, there's roughly nineteen spaces there, would be eight-hour parking only spaces. Or eight-hour parking spaces.
We didn't get any correspondence from the Downtown Parking Committee. What, what is the problem that we're solving with this?
Uh, what we're doing is we're adding, essentially adding, the, the request is to add a few more eight-hour parking spots in that area. The, the lot is not totally utilized, and this will help accomplish both.
The perimeter is really designated for eight hours, whereas the middle area can be permits, and that seems to be, if somebody, the way it is now, moved into that area, suddenly all the parking spaces are taken in the, that center area.
I see.
And so, we're switching that, and that'll be much more open, because the rest of it will be eight hours. It seemed like the best thing to do from a convenience standpoint from people who are going in and out.
It adds a little more flexibility to a lot, a little more use. And we've, we've had some other nuances that we've, we've changed throughout the system, and we, we have enough permits and spaces to, to handle demand, and so it seemed like a reasonable.
The eight hours that we're designating now, were never full.
Okay.
And so, we're moving that, opening up the center.
I will move that we accept the changes.
Thank you. Are there a second?
Second.
Any discussion, comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, motion's carried. Let's go to Park Board. Consider the final draft of the concessions agreement for the Beach House in Lakefront Park and review proposals from possible vendors. You were also in that meeting, and, and Catherine was in there. And did we come to any conclusion? Because I left.
Yes, the Park Board is recommending that we use JW Coladas as the vendor at the, at the Beach House. Uh, and, and there's some language that needs to be worked out. Catherine was there for, for, for that. But the agreement is for five percent of gross sales, um, and this will be for a one-year contract, or for the season through two thousand and, and so, to be renegotiated after that.
Is this based on the, the draft, staying as it is?
Uh, pretty, pretty much. There's some minor changes that, I don't know if you want to go over, or, we're, we're going to see...
Yeah, it's, I mean, that draft left issues open, like, um, five percent of rent, the term of the lease.
Time of operation.
What they've decided, as Paul said, is one year, and up to, up for renegotiation after one year, with first right of refusal given to the existing tenant, because that tenant intends to put in some improvements, cooking equipment, the tenant would pay for, all those improvements would pay. Electricity needs, will probably need to be upgraded, we'll pay for that. City will pay minor, um, if they paint the walls, they'll provide paint, you know, stuff like that. But anything that's going to be removed at the end of the lease, and even the electric upgrade, will all be at the cost of the tenant.
I think it's important to point out the time of operation.
Eleven AM till dusk or ten PM, depending on the night.
From what date to what date?
Well, we're anticipating Memorial Weekend, May twenty-sixth, but maybe later than that due to the construction down there.
Because we're reciting.
Because we're reciting through September thirtieth.
They also indicated that they must have a twenty-one-year-old on the premises during the operation, which will give us some safety surveillance, and somebody that's reputable to represent both the city and the, and the company.
Now, I do have a question regarding the wording of this draft document. In sub-paragraph one of paragraph two, the purpose, it says that the lessee may open the concession stand provided that such operation does not conflict or interfere with other park functions and/or reservations. Now, it's my understanding that the park can be reserved for weddings and things like that. Does that mean that sometime, every time somebody wants to have a wedding, the concession stand is to shut down?
No.
Well, you don't, can't tell that from this wording?
That piece of property, the concession stand, this lease applies to the concession stand, not to the entire park.
Okay, so, somebody else may ever...
What that was getting at, and it hadn't been flushed out really until the Park Board meeting today, was booster use for booster days.
And Boy Scouts.
And the decision on that for two thousand seven, the recommendation from Park Board is, the boosters, that use has been approved by the city. And so, for two thousand seven, if they want use of the concession stand, they get use of the concession stand. However, the Coladas and the boosters have already been talking about coming to some kind of agreement, both for two thousand seven and possibly for the future. So, if they can come to some kind of agreement on how they both can use a concession stand, offer different products and so forth, that will come back to the Park Board. Two thousand seven boosters can use it. Two thousand eight, again, after the end of this lease period, it'll be up to the parties and the city, Park Board and council, to kind of look at how it went. And if they can come up with a long-term arrangement that's amenable to each one of them, boosters and coladas, and is okay with the city, that's fine. We're not excluding that, but, um, we're also not saying there, the Park Board didn't want to say that they're entitled to it from now forward, just for two thousand seven.
Well, Catherine, it sounds to me like, wow, this may be on final approach. It hasn't landed yet.
No.
And I would like to us to postpone until we have a signed, signed...
By the lessee, the proposed lessee, have a signed agreement to vote on.
That's a good point, because there's a lot of little items that haven't been formalized.
And I agree, I wasn't looking for a recommend, or a motion, and I just want to bring it up to where we're at this point. We selected a, a vendor, at a rate.
Yeah.
We had some, a lot of changes that we went through at the meeting, and it only, it's only fair to have a final draft.
But I guess we would like to be able to deal with that vendor. I mean, that's the recommendation to council, to go with Coladas for the...
That's fine, have them...
And, um, if you have comments... Based on the proposed rent, they recommended five percent for the first year. If you've, I mean, we need feedback on that. If you have any feedback, if you're fine with it, then that's what we'll go in there.
Our standard agreement with Hudson Boosters is ten percent. Has been for years.
And that's, and that's what I, or what we, what I had suggested, but, um, given the fact that we're not sure where we're at this year, and the, and the capital investment that they're going to make, uh, we're going to probably have a late start. It's, uh, we thought, we just do, we'll kind of, uh, a trial a year, and next year we'll, we'll go to a more standard rate.
I think this is really going to add to the Lakefront...
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, no doubt about it.
I do have one question, though. We've talked about the Boy Scouts a number of times, but they're not listed under the purpose section.
No, because the Park Board decided, um, not to provide any... I mean, if they can talk with each other, that's fine, but they didn't want to, um, give that concession to the Boy Scouts, um, or any other group, that this... I think the encouragement was for them to go and talk to each other and see if something can be worked out and come back.
So, the section one here is not going to be in here, the discussion about the boosters?
Well, it will be for two thousand seven.
Then, why wouldn't the Boy Scouts be in here for two thousand seven?
They don't have, they don't have...
There's no agreement. It's been more of an informal practice. I think the sense was that if the parties can work it out, that's great. But the Park Board didn't want to carve into stone in the lease agreement every single person that's used the, the park.
That's the Mother's Club, and it opens up another door. Now, at the Boy Scouts, the Boy Scouts actually took care of the Minnesota Orchestra, because nobody else was there. They started by selling popcorn. They, uh, extended that to hot dogs and various other drinks. And, uh, I think if we open that up to all of the organizations that were not under contract initially, uh, it'll be something that Coladas won't be able to really adjust to.
Right, I guess I was looking at the fact that you've got a couple of established organizations that have done things for years, yet we're choosing one over the other.
Because one has a contract with them.
Yeah, I see that, I hear that.
Can I say something?
Sure.
Okay, I'm Krista Yocum, and I am an operator, or an owner of JW Coladas, along with my family. Our daughter, Lesis, is here with the time. One thing we didn't want to do is to come in and say, okay, this is ours, that's it, everybody else is out of luck. Uh, we've already been talking with the Booster Club and, and making arrangements there. Obviously, this year, it's non-negotiable, it's theirs, it's done and over with. Uh, we also have been talking with them about future years, and we are more than willing to come up to, um, an amicable agreement with them. And I believe we spoke to Chad. Sorry. Yes, anyway.
Troy.
Troy. Troy, there we go. So, and, and he says that we, he's more than willing to work out an agreement with us for the boosters. We also do not want to infringe on the Boy Scouts. It's their largest fundraiser, we are told, um, of the year for that, their Minnesota Orchestra, right? And, um, and the things that they do down there. We don't want to infringe on their fundraising benefits. As far as the far percent, five percent goes, we are going to be adding a lot of equipment, and it will incur a big expense this year. That's why we're asking for the five percent opposed to the ten percent, which I know was in question in the Park Board, or Park Committee. Getting the, the amount of food that we want to supply, and the variety of food, food that we want to supply, will require that equipment and that investment, uh, right off the bat, so...
Thank you. Any questions? We probably should have a motion to proceed with the known and come back with the unknown at a, at a later date.
I'm aware that we have Catherine finalize a lease agreement for the recommendations of the Park Board with JW Coladas.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
One thing I will be checking on is the insurance with their equipment in our building and how that's going to work. So, Nancy and I will contact our, to make sure that, whether they need a separate policy or how that will work.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close, motion's carried. Let's go to change order for the Beach House reciting project. Are we ready for that yet or not? Well, let's, uh, hold that over. And also, the issues on the completion of Lakefront Park Seawall Project, which Park Board, myself, and Catherine will be, and also BRA will be identifying some of the problems and the opportunities. And most importantly, if there's any cost, establishing those costs with Betty as we proceed. Did I miss anything?
No, no, there'll be, uh, another park, special park board meeting between now and our next meeting, all that, we should everything all block up by, by the, our next meeting.
At the last park meeting, you said you guys were meeting. Did you do that? Is there any information they're going to give us now, or no?
We were going to do what?
Meet down there?
Yep, met there, met down there today with the contractor, took over some issues.
And later, we'll get a report?
Yeah, because we don't have any, uh, any costs or, or final strategy yet.
All right. Okay. Let's go to new business, annual compliance maintenance report for the wastewater treatment plant, resolution number nine dash oh seven.
Jim Schreiber, I believe, is here.
Is here.
And he can comment on a perfect grade.
As always.
Compliance maintenance annual report is a means and tool to evaluate the wastewater utility in nine different areas, all the way from effluent quality to staffing, financial management, collection systems, and so forth. This year, each one of those areas, again, received a, uh, an A grade or a four, grade point average of four point oh. Thus, the, the composite score is, is a four point oh. So, we did, did very well again. Our effluent quality is, is maintained very high and is in substantial compliance. Some of the other area, concerns of staffing, uh, that, concerns that we had before will be addressed in another segment of tonight's meeting. And, uh, I think we're, we're in good shape. But if you've looked over the report, it's twenty-five pages long. If there are any questions in each or any section, we'd be very happy to answer.
Thank you, Jim. You've had a fantastic record over the years. We appreciate the work you've done and your employees, and, uh, we congratulate you.
Uh, move to suspend the rule so that we may adopt the resolution.
For a second? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Move to... Move to adopt resolution number nine dash oh seven.
Second.
All in favor?
Four in favor.
Aye.
Close, motion's carried. Review bids submitted and consider awarding the contract for street center line painting project. Who's got the handle on that one?
I guess I can do it. We received one bid for the center line painting, which we do every year. I'm having in front of you, it is with Twin City Striping, Twin City Striping, who I believe did it last year as well. Their bid was twelve thousand nine hundred and ten dollars. I believe it is a budgeted item, so we just need approval.
Does it say which streets or anything?
Um, I believe it's the sta, do we know, or Dan? Is it just the same streets, the main thoroughfares are the ones we do the striping, for the center line striping and the, okay?
The only question I have is, last year, at Grand Island, we were involved. We had the center's line striping done, and the yellow striping that was done, if you look at the old one, it's a darker tinted color of paint. It's, uh, it's not visible very well at night.
Can we specify that particular grade in the contract?
Yes, you could.
I think we should do that. I also, uh, think that the striping that we don't have, as you leave Crestview turning onto Carmichael, is absolutely atrocious. As you make that turn, you don't know if you're in what lane you're in. I did, uh, talk to Chuck from BRA, and I said, let's get, oh, there he is, no. Let's get that considered, because I think that's a much more important factor on the amount of traffic that is making that, that particular turn. And we're going to have some accidents there, for sure. So, why don't we discuss that with Public Works?
Yes.
And, uh, Mr. Zuli and Chuck can see if, uh, if that can take some precedence.
I'd like to point out that we're going to be, uh, striping, uh, well over two hundred thousand feet, linear feet in the city, uh, approximately thirty-five miles of striping, and the entire city is ninety miles road. So, we're going to be doing, uh, over a third. So, this is an extensive project. So, this summer, if you do see crews out, please be patient for just a moment, because they have a big job to do.
Don't miss that junction. That's a really bad act.
We'll get it. We'll get it.
Good. The grade of the paint gonna affect the cost on the bid?
Is the what?
Is the grade of the paint?
Color of the paint?
Well, or grade or? Well, let's let them, uh, barter with them to see that, uh, we get the paint that's most acceptable from the previous years.
And if it varies from this amount, they would have to bring it back for.
So, you don't wanna.
Put an award in contract.
Well, I would, I would award the contract, and if, if there's a, you know, contingent of, you know.
Well, I, I will put a contingency in the motion, I move that we approve the bid from Twin City Striping in the amount of twelve thousand one hundred and ninety dollars, or, excuse me, nine hundred and ten dollars, I think that's the same amount as last year. And contingent upon the, uh, the color of the yellow paint being satisfactory to city officials.
Very good, is there a second? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion's carried. Let's review the bids submitted and consider purchase of the two thousand and seven tractor backhoe. I think you, uh, you had the details on that, and also, uh, Betty has given us a summary on the monies, uh, allocated through capital projects, if I'm not mistaken.
Correct, and we're gonna have to ask Betty, is Betty still here? Yes, we'll have to ask Betty to speak in a minute.
Betty is here.
Uh, first of all, this is what I, uh, gave you all last time, a breakdown on what we were going to do and how we're going to re, uh, supplant some of the original, original items with other items. This was put together by Dan Ortner, our mechanic, uh, for the city, and Dan's here. Dan, would you care to come up to the, to the speaker's podium, and we'll go over these matters? Let's take the backhoe first, because that's first on the agenda.
Alright, the backhoe, we can purchase a new backhoe for sixty-one thousand dollars. And we'd like to put the hydraulic amulet thumb on it for, for, for reasons of, uh, being able to pick up brush, and it's gonna help our whole overall efficiency of our department. If we take our trade-in of our current backhoe that we have now, they will give us thirteen thousand dollars for that. And our total, the amulet thumb is six thousand four hundred and twenty-seven dollars, so our total for the backhoe is fifty-four thousand four hundred and twenty-seven dollars.
Okay.
Thank you, Dan. Uh, do you wanna take these one at a time or all at once, or?
Let's follow through and then we'll take them all at once.
Well, I think separate, I mean, you're, you're purchasing it from separate people.
I've been overruled, you have them all.
Well, I just didn't know how streamlined you wanted this to be, so I will move that we accept the bid from Miller Bradford for the backhoe.
Second, any discussion?
Yes, everything that Dan just mentioned.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion's carried, go ahead.
Next is the two thousand and seven wheel loader. Uh, Dan, we have your paperwork on that, would you care to elaborate?
Um, we got, uh, two bids in for the wheel loader. The one bid was from Miller Bradford, which was the lowest bid. The other bid was from F and K Escavating out of River Falls, and they, they quoted us two used machines, which were, as you'll see, quite a bit higher than the price of a new one when we get through case. So, my recommendation is, you know, stay with the case.
Especially since it's new.
Yeah, it's brand new.
And that's a hundred twenty.
Terrible results by buying used equipment.
Yeah, doesn't work. I will move that we accept the, uh, bid from, uh, Miller Bradford for a hundred twenty-nine thousand seven fifty, did you wanna add more, Dan, to this?
Um, just so they're aware that we're trading in our other, one of our older wheel loaders, they're giving us twenty-eight thousand for that. And our plow and wing setup that went with that other loader is going with it as well, cause we wanna keep the both loaders that we're gonna currently have with the same attachment, so if one breaks, we can exchange attachments.
Betty, are you agreeing with everything on, uh, the bottom line here? Okay, need a motion.
I, I did move that we, we accept the bid at a hundred twenty-nine thousand seven fifty.
Is there a second? Cause I was sleeping here.
Isn't the total price one twenty-two thirty?
Right, after the trade-in.
Yeah. Did I get a second, I'm sorry?
Second.
Any discussion? Harry Dunn, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion's carried.
Do we need to have a motion on the plow wing now?
Yeah.
Dan, the plow wing?
Um, I did a couple bids on the plow and wing. By far, the, the hanky system that we found, Mark Lotny and I both looked at them, and hanky is the way to go, they're the best cul-de-sac machine out there. That's where all of our complaints are coming from, are the cul-de-sacs, is we're not getting them done in a timely manner. The one, the one plow would come with the new wheel loader that we're purchasing now. The, the second hanky plow and wing setup that I'm proposing will go on the, our current loader that we have now, so we have two machines. We currently plow the cul-de-sacs with two machines now. But we're not set up so well, so we're doing him in an, in an, in an efficient manner. And this, I think, would help us fix our problem of being late at the cul-de-sacs and cutting down on the complaints.
Did you get a bid on that or not?
On the, yes. It was in that proposal.
Yeah, thirty, that's.
That's thirty thousand seven hundred and seventy-one dollars.
Okay.
So, that's for the present, or else I want for the new loader too, right?
Yes, the one for the new loader, the one for the new loader.
Do you advertise for bids, Dan, or do you just do quotes?
I got quotes.
I think with the value.
Yeah, over twenty thousand, you're supposed to.
We're gonna have to advertise.
Yeah.
Oh, I thought we had.
They advertise for both?
Anything over both plows?
Fifteen, fifteen thousand, I'm sorry, I thought we had advertised.
Well, let's delay that and get some, uh.
Yeah, we've gotta go through the process.
And I apologize for that, I got, I got put a, a big plate, and I'm trying to do the best that I can.
No, no problem, Dan, we'll just go through the process.
Very good.
For both.
Is that it?
For, yeah, everything, really. Can we move to one other item though, Dan, stay right there, please, that we can vote on tonight, and that is to consider selling our bucket truck. And you have paperwork, uh, on that for sale?
The old bucket truck.
You could write a song like that, I think.
Yeah.
Um, we, uh, did advertise this for sale, and Dan, we have one offer, is that right, from?
Yes, we have one offer for twenty-one hundred dollars. Means it was the only one that came in, I, I personally don't feel this is a, an acceptable offer. It was put up for bid, I don't know what the, the whole legal end of it is, if we have to accept it when it's put up for bid like that.
No, no, uh-uh, you can reject all bids.
Should bring that up again in Public Works.
Okay, let's, I'm gonna reject it, move for rejection tonight, and we'll, we'll take it up again.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion's carried.
Thanks, Dan.
Uh, review the operating policy for the boat launch attendants. Now, there is a policy, but in the last couple of years, the policy has been bent somewhat. And so, the policy says when the lot's full, that's the end. However, somebody took the liberty of saying, well, that's okay, but the citizens of, of Hudson can launch and let them find place for their boats. Well, they found places at your establishment, quite frankly, and along, uh, all the streets that aren't marked. And so, I said, let's bring that to the council. Uh, let's discuss the policy that's been established for a number of years. It eliminates an awful lot of trailers on the, uh, on the, uh, streets, and also impacts, uh, uh, a kind of foods a lot. And so, uh, because somebody took that liberty and because it's been happening, the attendants down there said, give us a policy that we can sustain. And so, that's the policy, and I think we should continue to do it in that particular fashion. Unless you have some other.
So moved.
Okay?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion's carried. Uh, let's see, we did all those, uh, let's go to G. Consider the extension of the moratorium on downtown development, ordinance number six dash oh seven, any?
Current moratorium, uh, terminates in just a few days, so we need to give consideration to this ordinance to extend the moratorium. Discuss this with our city attorney Kathy Kittrick, if we disagree maybe on this particular issue. There is a need by some of the properties, if they were gonna proceed with development, that the underlying zoning includes industrial development, which means they gotta go through a class two notice, and which takes approximately forty-five to sixty days typically, to get the rezoning in place. That time alone, in my opinion, would give us time to get to finish up the, um, policy guidelines and the zoning considerations. Kathy's looking at it a little more conservatively, and I'd like Kathy to express her opinions, but I think, uh, Mr. Pat Smith, the owner of River City Center is here tonight, also Mr. Al Keller of G C I Builders is here. Maybe they would like to express their views, or maybe what the potential impact of a continuation of moratorium may be. My feeling is the moratorium would be lifted, that would show this, a good faith effort by the city to work with the developers in getting accomplished the efforts that have been going on since last November. Kathy?
My point is strictly to protect the city and give it the tools necessary to get the ordinance changes in effect before any applications are made and any developer can argue that they somehow have rights in the existing ordinance, and I, um, it's not, I'm not saying anything with respect to the good faith or any, of the city or of the developers. I'm just saying if you have a moratorium in place, you're in a position to adopt your ordinance and make sure that nothing gets done that's not in compliance with the ordinance changes you want.
Well, let's, yeah, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Let's hear from the developer and also the owner of the property, whoever wants to start first. Al?
Good evening, I'm Al Keller, builder developer with, uh, the project. Obviously, uh, Pat's patience and financial stability on this project's have been, I think, pushed to the limit and then some already. Um, I, we did submit a building in compliance, I know there was the thing with the industrial in there, and it is an out. I feel we made great strides with the city and with the help of Mark Putnam with the work he has done for the city, to see a different avenue for what I was looking at doing, and I think with the relationship we have with the city right now, the correspondence that we've been working with, I feel is real strong. I feel that we need to lift the moratorium for the purpose of us to, to continue working with the city to get this thing finalized. We're looking at, uh, roughly ninety days to, to get to where we need a building permit financially to make this thing work. It's a big financial commitment for us, I think it's a great benefit for the city, and, uh, I feel that, well, I know that Pat can't wait any longer with the financial obligations that he's under, and he'll be up here maybe to speak on that. I think for what we've done to increase the parking and the stuff that Mark has done that showed as a commitment, I feel that it's gonna be a great project, I'd like to work with the city. I feel that we got all the tools that are necessary after meeting with them for the last five months. I wasn't happy with it at first, but I feel that we're getting a lot better product for the city, and the city's getting a heck of a product themselves, I think it's gonna be a real win-win situation with what the understanding of everything that's going on. I feel we're gonna build everything within compliance of what's coming up. Uh, one of the great things was the height restrictions, I think we worked through that. The look of the building, I'm very happy to see where the city is working with us on that, and where the planning commission has pushed it to. Um, it's very workable with what we can handle and what we can do with them. And I think the correspondence that we've had has been really good. With the public, I've gotten a lot of support from the local people also.
Great, any questions, Al? You agree with that, uh, Pat, or do you have something you'd like to say, or?
The only thing that, just that I'd like to add, you know, as a owner is, um, the property's been vacant now for several months, and, um, you know, we have had, we've been approached by different tenants, probably not type tenant that you wanna put into Hudson, um, and I'm, I'm trying to work with the city as best we can, but I've also got partners, I've got a fiduciary responsibility to them. And, um, we made a capital call last month to the partners for the two hundred and forty thousand dollars, because that about represents what we were getting in revenue. And I can tell you, you know, all I have to do is make a few more of those, and they're gonna say, lease the property. So, um, I, you know, if we enter into a lease, it's gonna be a ten-year lease, there're gonna be five-year options. The next twenty years, I'm tied up. So, I'd like you to consider lifting the moratorium and moving forward on this.
Well, I think the moratorium that we imposed both on the developer and Pat was basically to complete what we did complete. I think that, uh, their architect has been working very closely with, uh, with, uh, the planning commission, and also with Mark Putman, and, uh, I don't wanna jeopardize this particular project by, uh, putting a moratorium on it if we don't have to, because I'd like to see this progress as we finalize these guidelines. And, uh, to do that, I think we kinda have to, uh, extend ourselves a little bit, but that's just my opinion.
Well, I agree, I'll, I'll move that we don't, do not extend, or we lift the moratorium and do not extend it.
Second? Discussion?
I'd like to ask a question of Pat, if I could. Danny's talking, and I think Catherine's talking about forty-five to sixty days, am I correct, if this were to be extended?
Whatever you would want, yeah, we put in sixty days.
Well, because you have a, you have a certification process.
Yeah, for the rezoning process, typically it takes a class two notice by state law, also by the riverway regulations. So, by the time the application came in, we were able to set up a public hearing, probably that forty-five or sixty-day period time's gonna occur. Now, because residential development is not permitted in the industrial district, which all, four blocks of that area is, is partly industrial, so that alone gives us legal right to say no to an application if something came in. I, I think, uh, you know, what the city would be asking, uh, so, it's about a sixty-day process. Again, the moratorium goes in place, I think, I think, what the developer and the property owner's looking for is just simply a good faith effort by the city council, and that, that's a leap of faith. There's no doubt about it, it's a leap of faith. Kathy's absolutely right, from the position, most conservative and safest position to take is to extend the moratorium. But we've had cooperation, uh, by both of these parties, I don't see that, I have not seen any, uh, signs that that cooperation's going away, that we're gonna receive something extremely different from what we've seen before. But it, it would take us about sixty days to get through a zoning process.
Do you run the risk of a, maybe not, in just the timeframe, someone else coming in, presenting a plan, and before we have these finalized, have to approve this other plan under the old restrictions?
Well, it most likely, it'd have to be out of that four-block area and somewhere else in downtown, which I've not talked to anybody, and, and at least no, at least no parties have, have came to me and had discussions about doing something outside the four-block area that we've had previous discussions on.
And how long, right now, we're sitting at May ninth, right? So, how long before we have a chance to vote on the final, um, guidelines?
Well, we try to move that process along as quickly as possible. I mean, it's taken us this long, you know, originally we thought we might have it done in three months, it's taken us quite a while, I think we're, I mean, those, those, uh, guidelines are in pretty much a final draft form, there's, there's some things that need to be modified, but.
Yeah, I was just wondering if we had a concept of when it may come before council?
Well, it's kinda, we gotta have another joint meeting between planning commission and council, I would say, in about thirty days, probably.
And if we need be, we could have some additional council meetings to take this up, so.
Finish it.
The time element can be accelerated from that standpoint.
Because you would need to go through the same process for adapting the new ordinance.
Yeah, if you tied in the zoning, yeah, so I mean, actually, it's, it's, you know, the two, uh, two elements could run parallel. You know, consideration for zoning downtown, cause the cover as they plan shows all that land to be central business district. So, we do have consistency guidance on that particular zoning issue.
We have a motion, a second?
I'd like to make one, if I may, further comments, is that, uh, I, I think, uh, Al hit absolutely right that, you know, over the past five months, we've gotten to know each other, we've gotten to understand each other, all three parties, the city and the seller and the buyer, uh, the developer, a lot better. It seems to me that. It seems to me that we're... Nobody's going to be able to do anything for 60 days minimum anyway.
That's right.
So, maybe we don't really, shouldn't be thinking about giving up the city's protection. I mean, we want to do this deal. Everybody knows we want to do this deal.
But didn't it say that they can't proceed even with submitting the 60-day request until we're done? So, we're actually pushing them out an extra 60 days?
Correct.
Exactly.
So, if we don't lift the moratorium, they can't start their process.
That's correct. Is that what you were saying, Danny?
That's what Mr. Keller is requesting. He'd like to start that process and start working with the city staff or Mr. Mark Putman if you want to maintain and also this for our citizens, where you start looking into building plans, which would be continued on the zone.
Are we ready? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nobody closed? Okay. Motion's carried. We've got a couple of closed sessions, but before we do that, I think we've covered every item. We had a lot of items this evening. The one I see next is the communication recommendations of the mayor, and we have proclamations on the letter carriers' food drive. And I'm gonna let our in-house postmaster vocalize that for us. You want to hand that to him?
Okay, it was about seven years ago I first came before this council representing Hudson's letter carriers. Now, I'm in River Falls. But across the nation, the letter carriers have a food drive every Saturday before Mother's Day. This year, it's May 12. I'm gonna read the letter from the Hudson food drive coordinator. "May 12, National Association of Letter Carriers Food Drive will take place in every community in our nation. Last year, a record number pounds of donated food were collected to help needy families within our very own community. It's deliberately planned for a time of year when food shelves are at their barest. These donations help fill the need for food distribution throughout the summer months. This national food drive is the largest one-day collection of food in the nation. Hudson Letter Carriers will eagerly look forward to food donations from their customers on Saturday, May 12. It will mean a heavier schedule that day and maybe a few more sore muscles, but the burden will be eased by the knowledge that our effort will help feed many families in need. The National Association of Letter Carriers is conducting its one-day food drive along with the local United Way, the Campbell Soup Company in this worthwhile and effective project. We would urge you to consider proclaiming this day, May 12, as Letter Carrier Food Drive Day in the city of Hudson." And that's from Deb Standard, food drive coordinator, city carrier of Hudson. Proclamation. Whereas food shelves in most communities are at their lowest levels during the summer months, whereas the National Association of Letter Carriers Food Drive is the largest one-day collection of food in the nation, and whereas the Hudson Post Office Letter Carriers, with the cooperation of the local United Way and the Campbell Soup Company, will be seeking food donations from the public in an effort to help feed many families in need. Now, therefore, Mr. Mayor John DeBrohl, Mayor of the city of Hudson in St. Craig County, Wisconsin, do hereby proclaim Saturday, May 12, 2007, as Letter Carrier Food Drive Day in the city of Hudson and urge the citizens to recognize and support the merits of this cause by contributing generously to this worthwhile and effective project."
Thank you very much.
I'd also like to say thank you to the food drive people that work at St. Pat's Church.
Very good.
Because they donate their time to collect all the food and sort it.
Let me ask a question, Dennis. Where do we put a grocery bag or bags of food next to the mailbox?
Yep.
Is that around the street or...
And I believe this year, you are going to get bags.
Oh.
We got them in River Falls, and I think the Eau Claire shipped them out to the local areas. So, you might even be getting bags to put food in. But if you do not, yep, put them in a grocery bag, plastic bag, set them next to your mailbox. If you live on a street that's got a box on the street hanging on the box. Or like I had people do, they shove it inside.
I also have a Police Week proclamation. Is anybody from the police force, would they like to read that? Mr. Larson? I think it's much more meaningful coming from the force. Want to take the position? Boy, did I get out of work tonight, huh?
Lay load.
Police Week proclamation. Whereas the Congress and President of the United States have designated Tuesday, May 15, as National Police Officers Memorial Day, the week in which it falls as Police Week. And whereas the members of the Hudson Police Department play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedom of the citizens of Hudson. And whereas, it is important that all citizens know and understand the problems, duties, and responsibilities of their police department, and that members of our police department recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence or disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression or intimidation. And whereas the Hudson, the police department of Hudson has grown to be a modern law enforcement agency, which unceasingly provides a vital public service. Now, therefore, I, Jack DeBrohl, call upon all citizens of Hudson and all patriotic civic and educational organization to observe the week of May 13 through the 19, 2007, as Police Week, and to commemorate police officers past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities, have rendered a dedicated service to the community.
Thank you very much. Before we go into closed session, the only items we have left are communication items for future agendas without discussion. Any alter person?
I'd like to suggest that we review our zoning ordinances, you know, with what happened tonight, to come back and look at it more clearly and say, "How can we make that decision easier in the future?"
Okay, anyone else? City attorney? City administrator?
Just on a personal note, I'd like to echo Mr. O'Connor's comments at the beginning of the meeting about, you know, your support of that opportunity for those young men and women that got a chance to go to New Zealand. You know, speaking for my daughter and all the kids, it's something they'll never forget. You know, if anybody from the community... Randy did a great job putting an article in the paper for us, but I shared some of the pictures with you. But if anybody has an opportunity to talk to any of those children that had the chance to go, they'll hear a lot of great stories. So, I just wanted to echo his thanks.
Okay, we're gonna convene into closed session pursuant to 1995-1C Wisconsin stats to consider recommendations of the Ad Hoc Committee regarding candidates to be hired as wastewater treatment plant operators. And also, a closed session pursuant to 1995-1G Wisconsin stats to confer with legal counsel concerning strategy to be adopted by the council with respect to possible litigation regarding liquor license issues at Three Hets Pocket. Need a motion?
Second.
We'll call a vote, don't we?
Morset?
Yes.
Rodamacher?
Yes.
Wieland?
Yes.
O'Malley?
Yes.
Virch.
It's the letter that was stuck in.